Counselor Olson.
Here.
Counselor Fennessey.
Here.
Counselor Bender.
Here.
Counselor Sweeney.
Here.
Counselor McDonald.
Here.
Counselor Mazzolio.
Here.
Counselor Finsland. Counselor Herrick.
Here.
Counselor Esther Dahlbeck.
Here.
Counselor Dennis Dahlbeck.
All present.
Item number four is approval of the minutes from the...
Don't move.
Second.
We got a motion in a second to approve. Motion in a second to approve, excuse me, I was being interrupted. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 5.1 is a resolution to vacate and discontinue an alley located on block 117, Roy's Edition.
Motion approved.
This is a public hearing, so we will have a call for anyone who wishes to speak in favor, to speak, do so now. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the motion, favor of the resolutions, may do so now. And anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the motion may do so now. Anyone opposed to this resolution may speak now. Anyone opposed may do so now. And for a third and final time, anyone opposed may do so now. Now, we'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And, motion's carried. Item number six is a consent agenda.
Most approved.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Anything further? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 7.1's Park Recreation and Forestry Director Morgan is requesting that the council enter into an agreement with Roger Hanson of Big Lake, Minnesota, to build the world's tallest ice sculpture on Barker's Island in January of 2015, and...
Motion.
We have a motion in second.
Mary does have a brief promo.
What have we...
It's, our speakers are hooked up to the laptop, so it's really hard to hear. I'm gonna turn up the speakers for you guys, but it's gonna be kinda quiet.
Okay, a quick introduction to this. This was born out of the Douglas County Leadership 2013-2014 class, which I was a part of. Our group came up with an idea to have a winter festival that would be a signature event for Superior in the winter season where there is no other signature events going on. We, through the Better City Initiative, were able to contact Mr. Hanson, who has developed some technology to build an ice structure, potentially the largest ice structure in the world, and through him, we have this proposal.
We enjoy going looking at it when we take them on walks.
Something that makes you look twice.
I always wanted to like touch it.
A structure so big.
Like a very tall city.
You just have to wonder, what is going on? It's bigger than ever before, making his house look like a dollhouse in comparison.
This thing is almost twice as high as my house.
The project took Roger...
I'm ashamed to say.
Hundreds of hours. The process is controlled by software he created. Roger Hanson is known by one thing, for sure.
I'm the Iceman.
Roger builds an ice castle each year, but his 2011 conception is his biggest. At 64 feet high and 85 feet wide, the ice sculpture dwarfs his actual home. Recent weather has caused the structure to melt slightly, but Roger estimates parts of this castle will stay standing until June. God bless Roger, but I hope it's warm enough to melt that thing.
I love people like Roger, 'cause it makes me feel normal.
A computer programmer from Big Lake is taking his wintertime hobby to an extreme. Really is. He is drawing big crowds now to his own backyard. And that is where Jessica Miles is live tonight to give us a look at this huge creation. And Jess, you're gonna show us how he does it. Leah, this is no small project, let me tell you. This thing towers six stories here above the river in Big Lake. In fact, it's so big, you can see it from Interstate 94 in Monticello, and people are certainly curious about it. It is a mammoth structure, so big, it's hard to show its greatness without seeing it in person. At 100 feet wide and 63 feet tall, it is taller than the Guinness Book's largest freestanding ice sculpture in China, which is 54 feet high.
No, it wasn't easy. It was a lot of trial and error. A lot of things didn't work at all.
Roger Hanson is a software designer. He pumps the wastewater from his geothermal heating system in his house up through a pipe and out into the air.
Four times a second, this thing will make all of its adjustments, go through all its algorithms, and find a perfect target, and then it'll shoot the water for two seconds, and then we start that process all over in the next location.
He's thinking that come spring, it'll melt and then fall into the river. Roger says with what he has learned this winter, he's hoping to make this thing 80 feet tall next winter, and if so, he might reach out to the Guinness Book of World Records. We're live in Big Lake tonight. Jessica Miles, Five Eyewitness News.
Counselor Sweeney?
Thank you. I do have a few questions, okay?
Yes, Counselor.
The promotion part of this is, at least the one company is gone, is that fair to say?
That's correct, Counselor.
So there will be, whatever they were going to do, that's not gonna be replaced by someone else?
It is not. Not in year one. We're hopeful that if it is a success and we move to year two, the attraction would garner the support of a new sponsor. However, having said that, Mr. Hanson has been approached by Fox Media already, and WDIO called about the matter today, so just like when he built it in his backyard, we fully expect that there will be plenty of media attention.
That's a good segue into my next, it kinda, at least it scares me a little bit to think he built one of these only in his backyard. That's the only one he's ever built, right?
How many? How many have you built in your backyard?
About, this started out quite small, but this is about six big ones, about three large ones like this. The last one, as you seen on the last video, was the largest one we come up with. My intent is, my goal every year is to make these bigger and better, without, you know, you know, just, I'm real careful as to, you know, not go too far too fast. And so far, every year, I've been very successful with all the, you know, you try something, it don't work, and you find out a solution till we get the job done.
But you're right. You're right, Counselor Sweeney. This is the first time Mr. Hanson will build his attraction in a municipal setting.
So, when we put a contract in place, and I assume that was a contract we had and I read, have we crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is? For example, I'll start backwards, but what about the cleanup aspect of it, or the, after it's done? What happens then?
I intend to stuck with this project and be there throughout the duration until the City of Superior approves that it is successfully destroyed and no longer poses any danger to the public.
Who's gonna destroy it?
I do the destroying.
Oh, okay.
It can be done in several different ways. One way, I can, I got a wind system, very powerful wind system, and the assemblies are already right there where I can wrap this cable around the tower and pull it down, and you can keep doing that until we get it successfully destroyed. Also, the spray system itself, which is very accurately targeting and using a little warmer water, it, I can basically deteriorate it with the spray system itself. Yet, there will be a pile of ice that will last there till about, maybe into June, the 1st of June.
So where does the, I don't know, where does the water go?
Water will go right back down into the lake.
So we have permission to put the wa, we have permission to take it out, and we have permission to put it back in?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, Counselor, I spoke with the regional supervisor of the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, and the amount of water that Mr. Hanson needs doesn't meet any threshold for any permitting, so they're fine with it.
I don't wanna take this personally, but let's say you failed to perform, okay? What happens then? Let's say, I mean, you're the kingpin here, you're the enchilada. If something happens to you, it's not gonna be built, right?
Well, I, that's true in some respects, but I do anticipate having a few people that I can train in to do this, and that's, one of my goals is to get someone else involved in this. Like, I've been developing this technology, and I want it to, I don't wanna be the lone wolf out here doing it, I want some competition, and that's the only way, this is gonna be very successful. No, I do intend to have someone, try very hard to get someone else involved in this that could take it over. I plan to be there full-time by myself over there, and I plan on putting up a pretty elaborate security system also, detect motion and stuff like that. So, but, yeah, I, my goal is to get someone else involved in this also. And I do have people in my, up in Big Lake, that are willing to come down here. One retired person in particular by the name of Warren Meyer, and he can come down here and help me out too, if I really need to have him.
Okay, my last question then is, let's assume something happens, I mean, I'm not suggesting it would, but something happens from, from a financial standpoint, financial loss, who's covered on that if something happens? Is our liability, is, he's gonna have a $500,000, I understand it?
Mr. Hanson has agreed to indemnify us and name us as additional insured in the same way that the Lake Superior Dragon Boat Festival does, and the Water Cross Festival does, and so on. And the amount of a million dollar aggregate, Counselor?
We would have that in place before any of this.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Probably after the contract is executed. He sent me a sample of his insurance, which looks proper to me, so we'll, that would be the next thing we'd execute after the contract.
I've already sourced the insurance company through a local dealer in my area there, and unfortunately, he can't put in that into action for 90 days prior to the project start, which could be at any time now, but I had instigated this back in April, and they weren't able to give me the insurance at that time because of that prerequisite, but I foresee no problem with that.
This is really common with our special events. We often get insurance 30 days, 20 days, 10 days, or five days before the event.
That's a little unique, though.
Yeah, yes, I agree. Absolutely.
So there's more liability, I would think, with this than perhaps something else. Thank you.
Any further comment, Counselor Olson?
I see here that you're looking at completion in the range of February 1st and dismantled in March. Is there any way that could be, weather permitting of course, move forward to accommodate it coinciding with the Lakespear Pond Hockey?
That's an event at the end of January, Roger. That's an event at the end of January. I was wondering if you can build it by the end of January instead of mid-Febuary.
Well, circumstances are here, they're quite different from where I am at, at my home. I do intend, and I think attributes here will be much better than what I had to deal with in Big Lake. I lived in kind of a valley, and I didn't have the airflow needed to extract the heat off this, which I'll have a much better circumstance here. It is, I think, these projects in Big Lake matured at around the 15th of February. I'm pretty sure I'll be able to get that done by the 1st of February. I'm not certain on that, but I think the middle of January, I could have something formidable that will grow as time progresses.
So it'd be well on its way, Counselor, but perhaps not precisely complete. Good. Thanks. Counselor Mazzolio?
Yeah, I got a question. About the contract itself, and my question is, the city attorney looked at the contract that's in our thing, and agreed to the terms of it. I'm looking at one thing in particular, it says pay the sculptor $30,000 to construct an ice sculpture as outlined above. $15,000, $15,000, and then it further says that sculptor fees will increase to $45,000 in 2016 and $60,000 in 2017. So by agreeing to this and signing this contract, are we obligating ourselves to 2016 and 2017?
No, Counselor, we're not. A little bit earlier in the contract, it indicates that if in fact the project is a success, we might consider inviting Mr. Hanson back to build a similar sculpture in year two and three. But if we do not believe it is a success, we have the ability to excuse ourselves from the contract.
Okay. Next question is, I know it's costing $30,000 upfront, but this contract specifies a lot of things like water, and, so what is the total cost gonna be?
Yeah.
$30,000 for Mr. Hanson?
Yep. Actually, it's $15,000 upfront, Counselor, but we do have some modest expenses associated with what we're gonna do. For example, we're gonna install a snow, an orange snow fence around the perimeter of the site. We are going to incur some modest fees to bring internet to the site. There won't be a water charge because we're taking the water out of Superior Bay and putting it back again, but there will be some utility costs, electricity and so on. I can't give you a precise answer in this moment, but I'm, you know, I'm thinking a few thousand bucks tops.
Okay. You answered my questions, I guess.
Counselor Fennessey?
Mary, those costs you just referred to are no different than some of the in-kind costs that, services that we provide for Dragon Boat Festival and the other things that happen within some of the parks.
Likely, certainly less than what we provide for the Dragon Boat Festival, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
Not too dissimilar. Mm-hmm. Counselor Sweeney?
What you said, what is gonna deem success for the second, third year? We're gonna put that in the written word, so we know what success is?
Can you help me out here, Linda?
That's a great question. We went around about, with that particular question. We are asking the sculptor to keep track of statistics, donations, how many likes on Facebooks, how many referrals, how many interviews. You know, there isn't really a measurable number that we came up with, and so therefore left it open to be determined through all those different statistics. And, you know, if we're able to drive traffic, are we able to put a number on an increase in the motel, hotel tax? And hopefully the second year will have a greater, more narrow definition of what success is.
Okay, just one more then. You brought up another question. Where does donation, who gets the donations?
I do. I don't know how this is gonna be orchestrated yet. I am going to be giving some talks at the site there, and informational about the structure and about water in itself, and kind of an educational seminar, and I just basically leave it up to the crowd as to what, you know, what they wanna donate. I don't know exactly how I'm gonna do this yet. I mean, it's, I'm kinda open on that, just don't really have any idea yet. In a private setting, I started this out, and I'd probably be getting maybe $150 per session. It was just kinda something to help me out. Now that I do have some other alternative methods of financing here, I probably will not be so aggressive on that. I don't know how that's gonna work.
Counselor Esther Dahlbeck?
Are there gonna be any other activities involved with this, like, you know, maybe a snow sculpture queen, or parade, or any other activities other than just this?
Counselor, in year one, I think the park department, we will have our hands full simply trying to coordinate the things that are, the contract binds us to. I was very sorry that we lost the radio sponsor earlier. However, it could happen that people come to us and want to engage in some activities on the island, and we would be perfectly open to discussing that and having those parties fill out a special event permit the way everybody else does. So it could generate some additional activities. I just can't commit to planning and executing them myself in this moment. And particularly if it is, we deem it successful and we wanna do it in year two and three, I think we might then seek a sponsor and seek proposals for a sponsor that includes a host of winter events that are companion activities.
See, many years ago, we used to have something similar to this, and it, it was revolved around, you throw that thing, what do you call it?
Curling?
Curling, curling, yes, curling. I mean, they had a parade, they had a queen, they had everything, and that was in January and February. So I mean, it would be an excellent...
This is the sort of unique attraction that we think could generate just those sorts of things. Oh, yeah. The Superior also hosted a winter frolic in the range of 1941. Yeah, okay. Mr. Brus has put together a little bit of research on winter festivals specifically here and in general, so...
It went on into the 50s.
Oh.
Yeah, it was, it was quite, quite the deal.
Well, you know, as I said, this is a really unique opportunity for the community to drive some tourism traffic at a time when we sorely need it.
I was.
Counselor Herrick?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think this is a great idea, especially since our winters are six months long. It's nice to have something different, have people come out and really take a look at this, so be able to watch it grow and, right before, basically before their eyes. So I think it's a good idea, break up winter a little bit.
Counselor Mazzolio?
My question refers back to donations. Will Mr. Hanson be soliciting for donations for companies or anything like that, or just, or just voluntary people?
Not, not formal sponsorships, but just voluntary people who come to see his attraction, or who might hear him speak in a setting for a fee, but he's not gonna be selling sponsorships for the attraction to the business community.
Thank you.
I have quite a few different artists that come out to see this thing, and they take their photos and do their thing, and they pay me for that, and that's basically what they wanna give me. And that's been pretty formidable also. I really appreciate that. It gives me fanfare, it gives me advertising, and I enjoy that. I think this, this is a great opportunity for me. I'm really looking forward to doing something like this. It's my first time in a public arena, and I really wanna make a great success out of this. I think what we do this year will give us a good format as to what can happen in the years thereafter.
Counselor McDonald?
Hi, I'm just happy that you're coming, and, and the reason that you're getting the donations and we were so eager to have you take them is because you reduced your fees since we lost the town square. So I just want people to realize that you did drop $15,000 of your fee to come here anyways, so we appreciate that. Thank you.
The fee that I am receiving covers a lot. This is an immense project that, the undertaking starts just right after the first one ends. There's a lot of electronics, a lot of software development, a lot of engineering technology that goes into this. I hire machine shops to do special mix, special parts that run this system. There's seismic systems that go into here, there's camera systems that I'm integrating now. It's, it's quite an endeavor. It's something I really appreciate. I love the work, I like doing the engineering and the technology that goes along with this. The end result is just a confirmation that I've done things right.
Counselor Bender has a question.
Counselor Bender?
Yes, my question is, is this already a 501(c)(3) or are they using the city's 501(c)(3) status?
I'm sorry. I don't think we understood your question.
Is this a 50, is his corporation or whatever's doing this already a 501(c)(3)?
No, I don't believe so, Counselor Bender. We are entering into a professional services agreement with Mr. Hanson as our consultant.
Okay, so, so the city's 501(c)(3) status would cover this?
I don't see why it should.
I don't think the 50, this is Frog, I don't think the 501(c)(3) has anything to do with this. It's simply, it's simply an artist that we are hiring to design a...
Think of it as, think of it similar to the pyrotechnical company that the city hires through the 4th of July Committee for fireworks on the 4th of July. We pay that person, a professional, private sector person, half of the money in April, and we pay them the other half after they perform on the 4th of July.
Okay, that's a good analogy. Thank you. No other, no further questions.
Any further questions from the council? If not, there's a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One, two. Motion passes. Item 7.2, Planning Director Circus submitting a request from the Superior Business Improvement District to place a banner in City Center Park on the arch from October 1st through 11th, 2014. Motion approved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion's passed. Item 7.3, Public Works Director Getzmann is recommending to award the construction contract for the animal shelter building at Forester Construction for $1,988,746. Second. Counselor Bender wishes to make the motion.
Why?
Yes, I wish to make the motion, and, and before I make the motion, I wanna thank all of the people who've worked on this so hard for so many years, and it's finally coming to fruition, and especially ex-Counselor McKenzie for all the work that he has put into this. And I would therefore make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Second by Counselor Dahlbeck? Any discussion? Counselor Sweeney?
Thank you. Just for information, this committee that was serving before in the development, is this committee now null and void? Or is this committee still gonna take a part in this? Where are we on that?
We're wondering which committee.
Wasn't there a development?
There's been a lot of them.
Okay, wasn't there a committee that worked with the, whatever, with Jeff and with people to...
Yeah, the latest ad hoc committee has been meeting since early May, I think, up
Counselor, I guess from Public Works Department, I'm going to be watching the project and our approach on the project right now for construction administration, we're going to have the architect of record be basically in charge of reviewing shop drawings and reviewing the progress. They have three planned site visits right now. And what we're looking to do, we're actually working on it right now, is trying to find someone locally who can also help us out, a local architect who can be some extra eyes on the ground, visit the building more frequently and report back to the, the design architect. And then we'll have building inspection there, watching their prescribed pieces of construction as well.
So do I understand that we are going to have somebody on site then that, other than the architect? Okay.
We are, yep. We're going to try to, we're actually talking with a couple of local architects, trying to find somebody who's available to do that for us.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Are there any further questions? Counselor Olson?
Not really a question, but a comment and a thanks. See Mick McKenzie's in the, in the room and Mick, I know how daunting of a task this was for you and all the work and dedication and everything else that went with it over the years. You've gone through two mayors trying to get this done, number of counselors and, and a lot of help with Douglas County Humane Society and, and all the players that were involved. But I want to thank you for your tenacity with this. You got criticized a lot over being a pest, you know? Plain and simple, right? But the fruition is, is right around the corner and there's going to be a building and I think everybody's happy with that, so, thank you.
I'd like to, I'd like to thank Mick also. We talked about this before I took his place here on the council and I know that he's done a great job and he's put a lot of time and effort into this. Let's finally hear him, Mick.
Counselor Esther Dalby?
My sentiments exactly. Thank you, Mr. McKenzie. Well, job done.
I was about to echo those same comments and Counselor Herrick?
Yeah, basically echo those and thank everybody on the committee too for all their hard work and I know they'll continue to work hard to keep this shelter up and running. So, thanks everyone.
Is there any further comment? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, motion passes.
Item seven point four, Public Works Director Getzmann is recommending to enter into joint powers agreement with Western Lake Superior Sanitary District for providing services related to the disposal of hazard, household hazardous waste materials for residents of Superior for approximately twenty-seven thousand dollars per year.
Motion approved, second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any further comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item eight point one, Mayor Hagan is submitting the initial presentation discussion on the two thousand and fifteen general fund budget.
Gene, Finance Director Vito would like to speak to this.
Yes, Mayor Hagan would like this held until September sixteenth so he can be present.
Counsel, Counselor Herrick, you made a motion to hold until September?
September sixteenth.
Eighteenth, is it? Sixteenth, okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Counselor Olson?
Gene, will we be approving it at that night then too or?
Well, if you, if you wish, if you feel comfortable with it. Otherwise, we can have just introduction and discussion on that night and then look for approval on October seventh. Then we'd be getting kind of.
Okay, is the wage study going to be done by then?
No.
And that's in the budget?
I've put an estimate in there.
Okay.
Any further comments or questions? Motion is to hold until September sixteenth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed.
Item ten, ten point one is a preliminary resolution introduced by the Public Works Department setting a public hearing September sixteenth, declaring intent to exercise special assessment powers to blacktop the following alleys between Baxter and Lamborn Avenues and North Sixtieth Street and Central Avenue, John and Hewitt Avenues and North Sixteenth and Seventeenth Streets, off Sixth Avenue East and, I believe this is East Fourth and East Fifth Streets, and Ogden and John Avenues off Fifty-Fourth, North Fifty-Fourth Street.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any comment or question? Not all in favor, say aye.
I, I just. I just have one comment really has.
Counselor Dalby?
Something to do with this. I want to thank Jeff and his staff and the crews that worked out in Billings Park. They redid all the streets and I've had a number of phone calls and a lot of them told me to thank you there, Jeff. Great job.
Motion is to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item ten point two is a resolution introduced by the Plan Commission setting a public hearing October twenty-first to vacate streets located between lots five and six, block five hundred, lots five and six, block five oh one, and lots five and six, block five oh two.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there a further comment or question? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item ten point three is a resolution of the city of Superior approving the project plan, establishing, establishing district boundaries and making relevant findings to the creation of tax incremental district number thirteen.
Most approved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Planning Director Circa?
I just want to read quickly that you did all receive a copy at your desk today of a, a communication with a hundred and fourteen signatures opposing the plan. That's just a receive and file item.
Planning Director Circa?
Thank you, Counselor, President and Counselors. Want to introduce Sean Lenz from Ellers. Going to do a short presentation on the tax increment district, what essentially you are looking at tonight. I also wanted to let you know that you have a couple of, a couple of documents. One is the presentation that Sean's going to do because it's a little hard to, to see up there. And the second is actually a small amendment to the, to the TIF plan. I think you received, in the communication today from Ms. Simkins, there was a, an omission of, of a property in the TIF plan. And so we have amended that and, and put that in and it has, it has no, it has no effect on the plan, but we wanted to make sure that that was, that that was changed, so. I will turn it over to Sean and we can answer any questions if you have any.
Great, thank you, Jason. The, the presentation I'm going to go through is an executive summary, I would say, of the project plan itself. And as we move through it, it'll be fairly brief. Feel free to stop me and ask any questions as we move through. Okay. And what I was going to touch on in the presentations, a couple of different areas. To start out with, I liked at the beginning to spend a second just on the logistics and how tax increment financing works. So start there and then we'll really get into more of the specific project plan elements for district number thirteen. Okay, let's start out with how the mechanics of a tax increment financing district work. When the city chooses to consider the creation of a tax increment district, first step is picking a contiguous boundary within the corporate boundaries of the city. And at that point, you also will check into and do, and do a calculation of what is the current taxable value of that property that is proposed to be put in a new district. Under the terminology of tax increment, that's called the base value. And from the point a tax increment district is created and through its full life, the base value continues, as it had in the past, to be taxed and taxed by all of the taxing jurisdictions. So the taxes go to all of the taxing jurisdictions on that base value. What's unique about a tax increment district is that when it is created, from the point it's created throughout its life, any new development, new inflationary increases, redevelopment is categorized as increment value. Increment value is taxed at the exact same rate. But what is different about increment value is instead of going to all of the taxing jurisdictions, it goes to a, a fund that the city maintains and it is a fund available to promote projects or incentives to cause that development or redevelopment in the first place. And that's that, what's called, you may have heard this term before, the but-for analysis for creating a tax increment district. But for creating this financing tool, the city would not have the avenue and the ability to do projects and incentives to get that increment value to be generated. And then at the end of the life of a tax increment district, in the maximum life of the type of district we're talking this evening, a mixed-use district, twenty years, that new increment value that has been created due to the efforts of the incentives and redevelopment projects or development projects, that increment value then shifts back and becomes part of the tax base of all the taxing jurisdictions. Now, I'd mentioned going through that last page that the tax increment fund is created and that's funded by revenue, collected taxes on that new increment value that's generated. What can the city use the funds from taxing that new increment value to pay for? Again, with the idea of incentivizing redevelopment, development projects in the boundaries of the tax increment district and, and up to a half mile outside of the boundaries. What you see up here is a, a list of many different types of projects that are eligible. I've highlighted three, public works and improvements, cash grants or development incentives and projects, really, public works projects that are within a half mile. The, the reason I highlighted those, those are the primary components of what's in the plan for tax increment district number thirteen. Next, the contiguous area that I referred to at the front end of this discussion, I know it's a little bit difficult to see, is, is shown here. You'd see it's property around the Bong Center and includes right along the waterfront as well as across, across the street there into the, the more residential area in that segment of, of the city. Now, the two primary projects that are proposed to be incentivized by using this tool, tax increment district number thirteen, are the construction of a hotel project with approximately seventy-five or at least seventy-five rental rooms. And then there's a secondary project on a, on a parcel in the residential section of the tax increment district. This one, there is no immediate plans for it, but it is included in the project plan. It does have a, a twenty-year life, so looking forward, staff decided to include a second project. And that would be for either additional housing or a blend or a mixed-use type project on that site. Now, what, what do we expect that the tax increment revenue will be used for? As I talked about on the last page, kind of fell into those three broad categories. Little more specifically, property acquisition, incentive, grant, development grant, site work, park improvements, parking improvements, and stormwater improvements. And all of these costs and projects are deemed necessary in order to be able to facilitate what was just on the last page, that the hotel projects and then potentially to a smaller scale, that redevelopment, mixed-use development on, on the, the vacant site within the residential portion. We have, at this point in the plan, carved these out then into two phases. And I, I wanted to talk with the council a little bit about the financing mechanism then for incentivizing the phases. Phase one would be focused around the hotel project, starting in fourteen and going into fifteen. And the vast majority of that is going to be financed by what is called a tax increment project revenue bond. I could have Bob Tofti talk a little bit more about this, but I'll give you the, the broad picture of it. What that financing vehicle is, it's a, really a revenue obligation of the city. And what it says is that to the extent the new hotel project generates new tax revenue off that increment value, through a development agreement, the city will pledge to pay that revenue back to, after they pay their taxes, they have to pay their taxes, they'll get that revenue back up to an amount of paying the, the nine hundred and sixty-four thousand plus an interest component on that over, potentially over the life of the tax increment district. What this is not is a general obligation of the city of Superior. So this, this dead instrument will not be a dead instrument that if the revenues from this project are insufficient to pay it, that the city will be tasked with going to your tax base to come up with those revenues. It, it's coming from only the project itself. If it's not generating sufficient revenues, then only what's generated would be paid. Okay? So it's a little more of a, a risk adverse approach from the, looking at it purely from the city standpoint, but an incentive certainly to promote the project that you're hoping to see there, which is that hotel development. The other projects, the park improvements and stormwater improvements that you see listed as a part of phase one, the, the plan for those improvements, and we do expect those to be paid also by the increment from this project, those are going to be funded by internal advances from other city funds to the TIF and then to be paid back with interest from the, the TIF fund back to the, those funds that the city, city staff loans it out of. Lastly, and as I'd mentioned, the second phase was that redevelopment of the vacant parcel in, in the more residential share, preliminarily for the plan, an estimated incentive of about a hundred and forty thousand. Again, very preliminary with this, looking at this project being out a, a number of years. But that again would be the, the second phase of the proposed projects in TIF number thirteen. Briefly then, what are we expecting on the revenue side or what is the project plan expecting? There are really, again, two different developments or redevelopments expected to create increment value, which then when taxed goes to that tax increment fund. The hotel project, and there'll be a development agreement and a minimum, minimum tax agreement on this with a value targeted at just under four point eight million. That'll be occurring in the next couple of years. And then again, much further down the line was an estimated three hundred thousand on something in the residential area that would, could be residential or could be a mixed, mixed use of commercial and residential together. Then this revenue would then be the funding source to cover costs associated with that tax increment revenue bond. Again, and that's that revenue relationship between the city, the redevelopment authority of the city and the development group doing the hotel project. Again, that's a limited liability only paid by revenues from the tax increment district from that site. You'll also see on there, that second phase, it's listed as a, what's called a state trust fund loan. And then you'll see to the, further to the right, a gradual repayment of the infrastructure and stormwater costs that are a part of the project plan as well. That's that internal loan from other city funds to the TIF as a part of the incentive and necessary infrastructure project for the, particularly for the hotel project to go ahead. And the, there will be, as, as mentioned earlier, a development agreement as a part of this. Lastly, for the council, the steps involved, a couple of things that have occurred. On the twenty-first, and I think we've, yeah, this is the old timeline, I think I had, I apologize for this. We had the initial joint review board and the public hearing by the Plan Commission on the twenty-first. Then there was, the expected date was August nineteenth, but we're here on September second. That's, that was the second step in the process, which is the city council review and vote on the creation of the tax increment district. And then lastly, and, and the meeting is assuming approval based on after the discussion of the council, there is a tentatively scheduled joint review board meeting, which is a, a group, the joint review board made up of all the taxing jurisdictions. So they have a, a vote on the creation of the tax increment district. And that is set up for September fourth, so on Thursday of this week. And that is set up for September fourth, so on Thursday of this week. But with that, I think we've covered everything that's in the project plan itself. If the council, though, has any questions before acting on the resolution, or if Jason has anything else.
Other questions? Counselor Bender, do you have a question?
No, I don't.
Oh, okay. Counselor Sweeney.
Am I to assume that this is Number Thirteen in the active TIFs within the city?
Yeah, it's Number Thirteen. I'm going by memory, and Gene could help me here, but I think we've got seven, eight, nine, ten, no, ten is eleven, and eleven, twelve, and this would be thirteen. So one through six are gone, and ten was one that didn't end up moving forward.
Thank you.
Counselor Herrick.
Yeah, just for clarification on what you said, will the taxes from the homes and the businesses in that TIF thirteen area, will they be used to fund this project, or is it just basically the revenue from that hotel tax when that's built?
Yeah, that's correct. The current structures that are there, that have a taxable value to them, they will be set in the base value of the district, and taxes on that base value or current value of those properties will continue to go to all the taxing jurisdictions as they have in the past. It's only increases of value above that point that go to the tax increment fund.
Counselor Sweeney.
Thank you. Would you go through one, let's play the devil's advocate here, but let's assume this doesn't, revenue do not exceed expenses. Okay? Take me through that. What happens?
What happens in that situation? I'll start on this. If Bob needs to plug in on the development agreement side, I'll let him do so. But if we had a situation where the way the plan and the development agreement is set up is there's going to be an eighty-thousand-dollar payment annually from the projected taxes from the hotel project to pay that tax increment revenue bond back first. Let's say, for the sake of example, that you only had forty thousand of that come in. The city is really only obligated to pay what is collected from the site, and not anything up and above that. But there's also going to be a minimum agreement, I believe, on this, which could impact and require that that payment be at that level.
Counselor Rob Tofti. There is a real estate tax agreement that's a part of the development agreement that requires a minimum payment of taxes each year, which will be in an amount sufficient to pay the eighty-thousand dollars on the note, as well as paying the amount that would be due for the two smaller internal city loans. And if for some reason we couldn't collect on those, what happens is that the revenue note just doesn't get paid, or only gets paid to the extent of the increment. So there's no requirement ever to pay monies that are not generated from the hotel project back to the revenue note.
Planning Director, sir, did you have your light on? Oh, thank you. Counselor Olson.
I'm just wondering if somebody is willing to address the letter that we got today. Just in the fact that this set of numbers is one thing, and this set of numbers is another thing, and they're about that far apart. So just for clarification, I'm understanding what you're saying, and I'm reading this, and that they're just not jiving. If anybody'd be willing to take a shot at that.
Counselor Olson, Zemira Simkins has signed up to speak to this issue.
Okay.
Are you done, Altsir?
Yeah, if there's questions to be answered, be happy to do so, but if you want to start-
We can call you back.
Yep, okay.
Okay. At this point, we'll ask Zemira Simkins, who signed up to speak to the issue.
I actually have prepared a speech that will take exactly three minutes, but I think our discussion will take longer than that. So right away, I would like your permission to exceed the three-minute allotment.
There's a motion made to approve longer than three minutes, made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor Herrick.
Yeah, I have a question. Could you please identify yourself?
Dr. Zemira Simkins, I have a PhD in economics, and I reside at two oh seven East Third Street, Superior.
All right, thank you.
Since the discussion was about financing, I would like to bring your attention to page four of the ELLER report. And the second paragraph right there states that the project to be undertaken pursuant to this project plan are expected to be financed with tax increment project revenue bonds, municipal revenue obligation, and general obligation debt. And I don't know your background. My background allows me to judge that the general obligation bond is a debt issued by the city, and that will be repaid by the general revenue raised by the city. So property taxes of every resident in the city will go towards repaying the general obligation bonds. I haven't written that. That was written by the ELLER and the Redevelopment Authority. I'm just using the information that's presented in front of me as their evidence towards their letter, the petition that we have sent to you earlier.
Rather than argue the point now, would you care to continue with your presentation?
Of course, thank you. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of one hundred and eighteen residents who signed a petition that was sent to you to oppose the Tax Incremental District Number Thirteen. If the city approves this TID, over the next twenty years, over two-point-two million in tax revenue will be diverted away from local schools, roads, and other public projects. Therefore, we object against TID thirteen because we believe that using such a significant amount of public funds to subsidize a private developer constitutes a complete misuse of taxpayers' money. Cities that reasonably use TIF incentives limit the public assistance to five to ten percent of market value of a new development. They also require that at least one full-time job is created for every forty thousand in TIF financing. In this case, the City of Superior will spend more than thirty percent of the market value of the proposed Hampton Inn Hotel. Further, this Hampton Inn Hotel will create only fifteen full-time jobs and fifteen part-time jobs, whereas other cities would have at least required thirty-seven full-time jobs for a similar TID. We also object against TID thirteen because this project contains invalid findings, and therefore, TID thirteen cannot be legally approved based on the ELLER's findings. First, the but-for test, in our opinion, is not met because the city has never openly auctioned the site or offered it for public sale. Had it done so, it might have identified a buyer who would have purchased it without public assistance. Second, the economic benefits of TID thirteen are not calculated correctly. The city expects that a seventy-five-room Hampton Inn Hotel will have a market value of four-point-eight million dollars and generate one hundred and fourteen thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars in taxes per year. I have pulled out Douglas County and San Luis County property tax records, and according to those, Holiday Inn Express and Superior, which has eighty-four rooms, is currently valued at three-point-four million, and last year generated just under seventy-five thousand dollars in taxes. In San Luis County, in Duluth, a one-hundred-and-three-room Hampton Inn Hotel was estimated at three million dollars and generated, and had a net tax capacity of fifty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-two dollars. So it is totally unrealistic to project that a smaller seventy-five-room hotel will generate nearly one-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars in property taxes per year. Further, the city should use the net present value of future cash flows to calculate the costs and benefits of this project. My colleagues and I, who have PhDs in finance, accounting, and economics, have sat down and estimated the net present value of these cash flows. And what we came up with is that it will be negative seven-hundred-and-forty-thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars and four cents. That means that the city, by financing this hotel, will incur a net loss of nearly three-quarter of a million. No private business will take this deal because it's a losing deal. Why should the city take this deal? Please vote no on TID thirteen because it doesn't make any sense from the public point of view. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Are there any further comments or questions regarding the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed.
Item ten point four is a resolution of the City of Superior authorizing the transfer of property located within the waterfront hotel project area to the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Superior, and authorizing cooperation agreement with the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Superior.
Motion approved.
They're seconded. Motion's made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion's passed.
Item ten point five is a resolution of the City of Superior approving a cooperation agreement with the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Superior in connection with Reliance Superior LLC and Guardian Pest Solutions, Inc.
Motion approved, second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed.
Item ten point six is a resolution introduced by the Community Development Division of the City of Superior, setting a public hearing, October twenty-first, for the two-thousand-and-fifteen Community Development Block Grant Action Plan.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion or comments? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed.
Item eleven point one is an ordinance introduced by City Clerk Klon, amending City Code, Chapter Forty-Six, compensation of election inspectors.
Motion to approve, second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed.
Item eleven point two, an ordinance introduced by the Common Council, amending the City Code, Chapter One Twelve, the traffic code, disabled parking zones by adding sixteen-twenty-six Iowa Avenue.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If opposed? Motion's passed. We have business by public. Counselor Bender would like to make a comment on business by public. Since he's not functioning as a counselor, he'd like to be a member of the public right now.
Yes, I am, and thank you for that. My name is Warren Bender, and I'm with the City of Superior Rotary Club, Mr. Porter. And I just want to let everybody know, I will, in two weeks, at the September sixteenth meeting, I will have the big check, and hopefully the small one, too, the one that's actually catchable, from the Lake City Dragon Bowl Festival, two thousand and fourteen. And that presentation will be made by me and whoever else I can, of course, is showing up at that time. So thank you for allowing me to speak. And that's it.
Okay, is there a motion to-
I want to say something. I just want to make an announcement also, on behalf of Dan Shea, our IT administrator. Our software for streaming our video of the council meeting was upgraded and now can be viewed on your iPad or mobile device. Previously, it was just a PC or laptop, so Dan wanted me to make that announcement.
Okay, is the motion to adjourn? Motion's made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.